Good evening, everyone. This evening, Reverend Tom Godwald, Lititz Christian Church, will lead us in our invocation. If you would go to the mic, please.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everybody else. I've been here, this is my 50th year in Lititz, trying to take care of people that get lost in a lot of ways. And so I'm very grateful to be part of this town and I'm grateful that you're here, grateful that all of you are here. I love uniforms. We're just so, so glad. So could I be thankful? And if you want to join me in being thankful for Lititz, let's join together. Bow your heads and here we go. Father, we thank you for this council, for this place, for this amazing town. We ask that your grace and wisdom would be upon this meeting tonight, that you would touch everybody who loves Lititz, that are here for the collective cause of seeing something furthered here that glorifies you and brings good things to our people. So we bless you and we praise you for everyone here. So guide us, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Could you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, to its stand, nation, God, the faithful, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, the first thing, just to share with the public, we did hold, council did hold an executive session on January 14th regarding some personnel matters. Next thing is the approval of the minutes. Did everyone get a chance to review those?
Yes, Steve, I did.
Yes.
All right. Any adjustments? Everyone fine with the way they're written?
Move to approve.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Steve, excuse me, is Christine online?
Yep.
Okay.
I just heard her. I did not announce it, but I asked Rob and she said she was on there.
Hi, Chris.
I'm here, yes, thank you, y'all. Good to see you.
All right. First up, Dwayne, I'm guessing you're... Mike, you delegated that to cheer.
He's evaluating me. Go easy. For the record, Mike Smith, Deputy Fire Commissioner, Warwick Emergency Services Commission, commonly known as WESC. So I'm here tonight to present to you 2024 year-end summary. I was told to keep it to 89 minutes or less, so I'll try to make this simple.
That was second.
Yeah. So, next slide, Rob. So the first two slides I have here are just educational thing. They don't have anything specifically to do with 2024, but just a reminder, I know there's some new council members from last year and just anyone who may be in the audience, just what Warwick Emergency Services Commission is. And so we are, Rob, if you can go to the next slide, I can talk about these bullet points while we look at the next slide. So I think this presents it well. The Emergency Services Commission is kind of the, is the in-between, if you will, the middleman. This is a situation where we do want a middleman. So we're overseeing all the emergency services, fire and EMS, in the three municipalities there, Elizabeth Township, Warwick Township, Lititz Borough. Those three municipalities should be familiar to you because that is based around the comp plan. So WESC in some form or another has been around for about almost 25 years now. But this, I think, just a lot of people sometimes will question, you know, what is, what is WESC? Or how does that relate to Lititz Fire Company or the other fire companies? And so we just wanted to have this image, again, it's just educational, just so everyone understands, the municipalities are responsible for providing the fire and EMS, and they've delegated that in these three municipalities to the Emergency Services Commission. So we oversee that service delivery. And so that's, you know, tonight's summary presentation is, is just to kind of go over what those service deliveries were in 2024. So next slide, Rob. So Warwick EMS, by the numbers, they had a total of 4,117 calls last year, and you can see 1,145 of those, almost 28% were in Lititz Borough. So I won't read all the numbers there unless you really want me to, but that's the breakdown. And then there, you know, they are contractually, like, again, let me back up. So each of the emergency services in the municipalities has a service contract with those municipalities that they serve. For EMS, there is a key performance indicator in that contract that we track and track annually, and that is that they have to be on scene within nine minutes from the time of dispatch for emergency calls 90% of the time. And you can see that last year in 2024, Warwick EMS accomplished that metric 97% of the time. So no issues there. Next slide. And then just, just a couple of highlights, just to give you kind of an idea of what's going on in Warwick EMS world. So some of you may know that they started serving Elizabeth Township. Elizabeth Township had what was known as Northwest EMS. They kind of changed into a different service provider, but as a result of that, it was an opportunity for Warwick EMS to kind of expand their coverage and fit more within the overall WESC model. So they started serving Elizabeth Township. That has gone well. They also added a fifth transport ambulance and a third paramedic truck. Part of that is obviously the growth into Elizabeth Township. Implemented a bike team, you can see there in the picture. That's very centric to Lititz Borough, all these special events that we have here, but it also, they've used it on the rail trail. So just something to get them out into remote areas, into crowded areas, better response. So that has worked out well for them. They have six providers who are trained to participate in that. They replaced their existing cardiac monitors with new state-of-the-art monitors. It may not seem like a big deal, but there's two key points there. Number one, those things are super expensive. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars. But the other thing is that they, the new state-of-the-art monitors are much, much lighter. And so if you go back to the other slide, and you don't have to go back, but if you did, over 4,000 calls, these guys are carrying this equipment up and down stairs, into the hospital, out of the, all over the place. So just by eliminating, you know, 10 to 15 pounds on some of that equipment makes a big difference for them. And then they had 23 CPR classes that they did throughout the community, various different places. So all good there. Next slide. So the fire company then, 445 calls last year. And again, the fire, so let me back up real quick. Warwick EMS is a fully career agency at this point. They're staffed with all paid personnel. The fire company is still all volunteer. So the group that I have here with me tonight, that specific group, the reason why they're here is, this is the group of members from the fire company who are less than 30 years old. So there's actually two of them who couldn't make it. One is sick and another one had an appointment. So there's a total of 11 of them who are under the age of 30. And there's fire departments out there that don't get 11 people to come to a call. And we're fortunate enough, we've got 11 in this age group, which is fantastic.
I think that deserves, yes.
So 445 calls on the year, 203 of those in Lititz Borough. And I specifically remember doing this presentation last year, and I don't remember how we got on the topic, if there was a question or we just talked about it, but, you know, the relationship between Lititz Borough and Warwick Township. Last year, I remember Warwick Township had more calls than Lititz Borough. And I specifically remember talking about the fact that that just fluctuates year to year, but it's always right around that 50%. Like, they are very close. So, you know, 203 to 188. Next year, it may be 203 and 188, just the other direction. So from one year to the next, there is not a huge disparity between the call volume in Lititz Borough versus the call volume in Warwick Township. So it just so happened that 2024, Lititz was, was busier. So in the service contract then with the fire company, there's two metrics that we measure. One is the same on-scene time within nine minutes from the time of dispatch. The fire company met that 97% of the time. And the second one then is responding with a qualified crew. In the contract, the word qualified crew is defined. What that means is you have to have three people, a driver and two suppression-level firefighters. Suppression-level firefighter is then further defined. In the interest of keeping this to 89 minutes, I won't get into all of that. It's in the document. But Lititz Fire Company met that metric 100% of the time. So. Next slide. So then just a couple of highlights for the fire company. 10% increase in call volume. I mean, again, that's huge, you know, we're talking an all-volunteer force and these guys picked up an extra 40-plus calls last year. Three new suppression-level firefighters, I think two of them are here with us tonight. So, yeah. So these young guys like are getting that qualification to be able to meet that metric of being part of a qualified crew. The new ladder truck that went into service, we've talked about that a couple of months ago. There's a picture of it. Things working out great. We love it. And then just again, a point, you know, these guys being all volunteer and the events that we have here in town. So for the events that you see listed there, they, we have a crew in the station on standby for the duration of these events. Fire and ice, both weekends, Taste of Lititz, Fourth of July, craft show, which I ended up having to cross out because it didn't happen, but we were ready. We had a crew there. We were, we were going to be on standby. And the Lions Club Car Show. So basically, any time that we're closing down streets in the borough, the volunteers, they can't, they can't respond because the streets are closed. The streets being closed delays the response of the fire apparatus. So these guys staff the station. It allows for quicker response, better service. And then this last one is kind of a joint, you know, achievement between the fire company and you, Borough Council, and that is that the Borough Apparatus Fund contribution from council is now caught up. So five years ago, we had identified the fact that the borough was underfunding the apparatus contribution, and we developed a plan to how we could get that to where it needed to be. And last year was finally the catch-up year. So the $10,000 increases every year in the budget will be no more. We are back to the 3.5% inflation. So, and that is fantastic for you guys. And just another point to that, you do not have to try hard to find news stories of fire companies coming to municipal leaders and saying, hey, we just ordered a new million-dollar fire truck, can you help us pay for it? Well, if you just ordered it and now we have to figure out how to come up with a million dollars to pay for it, nobody wants to be in that position. So I think the fact that WESC and the council and Warwick Township, specifically for Lititz Fire Company, have worked together to develop an apparatus plan, develop a funding model that allows you to put money aside every year that is manageable, as opposed to me having to stand up here and say, where do we find a million dollars to pay for a new fire truck? So we, we will not be in that position. Next slide. And then just to go over, you know, WESC, what we have done. So WESC was represented at 350 calls throughout those municipalities. Lititz Borough, we were on scene for 140 of those. So we don't, you know, Dwayne and I work Monday through Friday, but we're on-call 24/7. We are contractually obligated when we're available for any high priority call, regardless of the time of day. So structure fire, technical rescue, gas leak, things like that. So that's, you know, where, where those numbers come from. Next slide. And then just a couple of highlights for us. We finally finished standardizing the structure fire response throughout the WESC area. This is something that we had been working on for a while, but we are finally there. We have the Fit for Duty Medical Program completely up and running now, and that is going well. The apparatus replacement plan that I just talked about, that was reviewed and updated just last year. The WESC Board approved that. We have a standard accident and injury reporting program now across all the WESC fire companies. And Rob was very helpful. We've had two instances last year, one before we had this program in place and one after we had the program in place, and it was definitely a huge difference between the two claims. So we are happy to have that done. We hope we never have to use it again. And then just something that Dwayne and I, we, we were both able to achieve our fire investigator certification. So we traveled out of state for a week in September, went through a pretty intensive class, and both were successful in that. So next slide. Questions? And I think we have about 75 minutes left for questions.
First of all, thank you, Dwayne and Mike, for everything you guys do and the fire folks that are here and everybody in emergency services that helps keep the, the community safe. One question, I don't think I saw on the slide that I know you guys have brought up before. So you said 203 volunteers, correct?
No. 203 calls in Lititz.
How many volunteers total?
We have, currently, we have 35 active firefighting members, and then there's a handful, I would say maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of five to eight, like administrative, behind-the-scenes people that help out with non-firefighting tasks. So we're probably somewhere in the 40 to 42 range.
The question or the metric I was trying to look at that I know I've seen in past years, where's that compare? I mean, and that's always been a concern that you guys have, is having enough, is it growing, shrinking?
Yes. Yes, it's growing significantly. We've made great strides over the past couple of years. And so here's, here's a metric. So in 2024, there was a total of 40 firefighters who responded to at least one call. So at least represented on one call. And then if we go up to 10%, there was 28 firefighters. An average of 12.6 firefighters per call. So at one point in time, probably six, seven, eight years ago, that number was closer to seven. So we've, we've made good, and I mean, this is...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking. So if you're saying you're 40 and you've got roughly 10 guys under 30, that's, that's also something that's changed in past reports you've shared.
Yep.
Just curious. Oh. Just curious, how many young gentlemen here are in high school? All right. So do you get out of high school when they get calls? You couldn't, no?
I don't, I don't think they would allow that.
All right. Just thought I'd shout.
The group might grow if they allow that.
Well, thank you guys for serving, all of you.
So about 25% of your staff is under 30, right? So gentlemen in the audience, what's the number one reason for wanting to serve in this role at this time in your life? Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Mike, another question I had, again, I'm trying to get through here on the, I think I saw you were saying there's 10% increase roughly in the calls, fire department in Lititz. Is there, and what's the biggest metric change? I know of two, you know, big fires that I was aware of.
Yeah, so there was a 10% overall increase for the Lititz Fire Company. That wasn't all in the borough.
Okay.
So it's across the board. And the metrics, we, Dwayne and I looked at this, there is not one single component. It was really like everything was on. There was more accidents, there was more fires, there was more fire alarms, all of that. It was just across the board.
There's some, I'm trying to lead into, is there something to be concerned if the accidents went up by like 40% or something?
No, I really think it's just the nature of the growing community.
Okay.
Mike, I believe when I visited with you and got a tour of the fire company, we talked a little bit about how having WESC allows the time, having professional staff to do things like equipment assessments allows for some real cost-saving opportunities. And the one thing you talked to me about was the pumper truck? Can you just talk real quickly about the advantage there of, because I, that story really impacted me?
Sure. So in the revised apparatus plan, one of the things that is happening this year is we have a pumper engine that is 15 years old currently. And typically, in the previous plan, at around the 20-year mark, that pumper would have been replaced in the plan. In today's dollars, so the Brookerville Fire Company, another one of the agencies in WESC, they, they have the most recent new pumper as of four months ago, I believe. That unit cost $800,000. So now we're saying in the next four to five years, we, Lititz would have been buying a pumper at $800,000 plus whatever inflation is over the next four to five years. So that was what was in the plan. We evaluated the condition of the existing pumper, the one that is 15 years old, and it is actually in really good condition mechanically, body-wise, that kind of stuff. It's worn out from the standpoint of 15 years worth of, you know, hundreds of calls, guys climbing in and out, equipment coming in and out of the compartments, that kind of stuff. So what we decided was to get a quote to see what it would take to just kind of refresh that unit. New seats where the fabric isn't torn, fix some of the compartment doors that have gotten misaligned, things like that. Newer technology, that, that unit still has some halogen lights on it, where we would want to replace all of that with today's LED technology. And so we're somewhere around the 175 number to basically bring that unit up to today's standards, refresh it. Mechanically, it's got 23,000 miles on it, on a motor that's literally designed to go a million miles. So the plan has now been revised that we're going to invest that $175,000, and we think we will be able to get another 12-plus years out of that unit, as opposed to having to replace it in four to five years.
It's a great story. Thank you for sharing that. And we would not have been able to do that without our paid WESC staff. The, the staff before, the volunteers before didn't have time to invest that kind of time and energy into that kind of investigation. So kudos to you all for that. That's great.
Yeah, and I think the other part to it too is just like, you know, is the, the time and, and the attention to those matters, where it's not necessarily that a volunteer couldn't do it, it's just they, they were getting pulled in so many other directions, not only at the fire station, but just in their general everyday lives. Whereas now, we have staff dedicated to be looking at this stuff all the time.
So, so our budget does include money for health and safety of our community, which you're a part of, so thank you for that. Tell us a little bit more about that preparation when you're at these big events. When I was at the tour, you told me about how you scenario, different kinds of opportunities. You know, we just went through something in California where they weren't prepared. And what you were just telling me is that we are prepared here in the Lititz Borough, and we, I really do appreciate that. So the public needs to know that there's work behind the scenes that helped protect our community, keep it safe.
Yeah, and, and I mean, you know, a big shout out on that end to, to Dwayne, who is the Emergency Management Coordinator for the borough, and to Jared, who does a great job leading the effort to bring us all together to develop these plans. But I mean, we start, we, we literally are working right now, like exchanged emails today, we're working on the Fourth of July. Like that's, so these aren't things that we're leaving until the week ahead of time or things like that. Like we are, we are working, we are making sure plans, and it's, the other thing too is, it would probably be easy to just take the plan from 2024 and scratch out the date and write 2025, but we don't do that. And again, a big part of that is, is Dwayne and Jared making sure that, okay, you know, what, what did we do? What worked? What didn't work? What do we have to look at? Chief Nye does a great job of making sure that we're getting everybody who needs to be in the room, in the room. So I mean, it is an all-around collaborative effort.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for Mike? Dwayne? Public, any questions for WESC?
Guys, now's your chance.
Mike's still shooting for those 89 minutes.
He's got some time.
If there's no further questions, Mike, Dwayne.
Thank you. Thank you.
Everyone that attended from the fire department, thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
You don't get the applause anymore since you're paid.
All right. That's item one. Item number two, we have one ordinance. Tanya, do you want to take that?
Sure. So we've got an amendment to ordinance number C-616. It's amending chapter 115 to restrict a portion of Maple Street to be one-way. Maple Street, from South Spruce Street to the high school, vehicular traffic is going to move in a westbound direction only. We've talked about this for the last couple of months. Does, we advertised last month. Anybody on the council have questions? What about public? Anybody want to step up to the mic if you have any questions? Nobody? All right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment to ordinance number C-616 to restrict a portion of Maple Street to be one-way.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, Tanya. All right, that's it with the ordinances, and we have two agreements. I think you're going to take those, Ken?
Sure. Again, thank you for the presentation tonight. Mike, these agreements are renewed each year between the fire department and Lititz Borough, and then the ambulances services and the Lititz Borough. And it's just an opportunity, as you said, to, to make sure we go through all of our, our understandings, our, our key metrics, and make sure we're all on the same page. So we do this each year in the, in the first meeting of the year. So before we make a motion to approve the, the fire services agreement, I'd just like to highlight a few of the Lititz Borough responsibilities and share the fire company's responsibilities. The Lititz Borough, we are to be part of WESC. We also acknowledge that WESC Fire Commissioner and Deputy Fire Commissioner are as the top fire officials. We coordinate, we define the first due fire district and approve a standard of response coverage time. We annually fund major fire apparatus costs according to the WESC-approved schedule. We provide workers' compensation insurance for fire company members. We pay for the fire company's mobile data contract, and we forward any state fire tax funds to the fire company for their relief association. On the Lititz Fire Company side, their responsibilities are to provide fire suppression for hazardous materials and vehicle rescue, technical rescues and other emergency services. Be a member of WESC. They also acknowledge WESC Fire Commissioner and Deputy Fire Commissioner as the top fire officials. They adhere to all the standards of response coverage and training standards, follow the apparatus funding and replacement schedule, fund the purchase of miscellaneous fire company vehicles, continue to provide fund drives and fundraisers for the annual operating budget. Any questions from council? Or from the public? I'd like to make a motion to approve Agreement 569, highlighting Lititz Borough agrees to the 2025 fire services contract with the Lititz Fire Company effective January 1st, 2025.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, Ken.
And then just, let's just take a moment to just be thankful for what our community does here along ambulance services. We have some responsibilities that have been reviewed. For Lititz Borough, we will participate in the Warwick Emergency Services Commission, that's WESC. We recognize WESC as the Fire Commissioner and Deputy Fire Commissioner as liaisons. We define the first due ambulance service areas and approve this standard response coverage. We pay annually to assist funding ambulance replacements according to the WESC apparatus replacement and funding schedule, and we share in the cost of fuel for ambulances with Warwick Township. And then from the Warwick Community Ambulance Association side, they provide emergency medical services for Class 1, 2, and 3 incidents. They're also a member of WESC. They adhere to the standard of response coverage. They provide annual financial statements to the Lititz Borough. They utilize membership subscriptions for their operating budget, and they meet Pennsylvania Department of Health requirements for EMS agencies. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve Agreement 570. Lititz Borough agrees to the 2025 ambulance services contract between Warwick Community Ambulance Association effective January 1st, 2025.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, Ken. You're welcome. You're welcome. All right, I believe that is all the ordinance resolutions and agreements. There with you are caught up. All right, we're moving on to the council members forum. So the first thing on the agenda is the council, the committee reorganization. Council, I know I've spoke to each of you over the past couple of months about some of the modifications that we're going to make, but for the public, I'm going to share who is on each of the various subcommittees, external appointments, and liaison. I'm going to start with council subcommittees, which are internal organizations. Subcommittee for Personnel and Benefits, which is a combined subcommittee we've had from last year, will be MEC as chair, Sensenig also on. We will have the Subcommittee on Building and Grounds, Ken Mobley as the chair, and MEC on. Subcommittee on Finance, we will actually have three folks on that this year. Ken Mobley as the chair, Chris Sensenig, and Tania Carpenter. Subcommittee on Zoning, Gaddis chair with Carpenter also. Subcommittee on Streets and Traffic, Carpenter is the chair with Mobley also. Subcommittee on Water and Sewer Services, Mobley as chair and Gaddis. And Subcommittee on Planning is Sensenig chair with MEC. That's it with the subcommittees. Moving on to the external appointments. Warwick Regional Recreation Committee is Gaddis and Carpenter. Regional Community Development Committee is MEC. Venture Lititz is Sensenig. WESC, which we just talked about, is Carpenter. Regional Comp Plan is Gaddis. And then we have four liaisons. Lititz Public Library, Gaddis. Rec Center, MEC. School District, Carpenter. And junior councilperson coordinator is the mayor. Elijah, remind me from last year, do we vote on this?
I would say vote on the external appointments. I think the liaisons and the committees are more informal.
Okay, adjust the appointments.
Steve, if I can just make one correction, I think we talked about zoning becoming zoning and court code enforcement.
You're absolutely right.
If we can just reflect that in the.
Would anyone like to make a recommendation on each of the four external appointments?
I will move that Tania Carpenter be assigned again as the Borough Council Representative on the Warwick Emergency Services Commission.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
I'll recommend that Jerry MEC be appointed as the Borough Council Representative on the Regional Community Development Committee.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend that Christine Sensenig be appointed as the Borough Council Representative on the Venture Lititz Board.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, and Mary, somebody else needs to do the other two for Mary.
That's why.
I'll recommend Mary, well, I can't do it myself. Oh, I'm going to recommend on the regional comprehensive plan that Mary Gaddis serves as counsel for that. Sorry, my throat is kind of in and out.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. If somebody wants to take the Regional Rec Committee other than Mary or Tania? Ken? Jerry?
Okay, we won't do it. One less meeting.
Yeah, we have to make a motion that Mary Gaddis serve as the and Tania serve as the Regional Rec Representatives. Counsel, please.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. All right, thank you, everyone, and we're good with the rest of those. Let's move on to the council members forum. First up, Ken, water and wastewater.
Okay, let's start out with Infomark. Doug, come on up. Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Good evening. We'll start off with flows. The wastewater plant's average daily flow was two point four six million gallons a day, which is up six point eight percent from last month. Water plant's average daily flow is one point six nine million gallons per day, which is down three percent. All wells still remain out of drought conditions. We had one emergency call out at the wastewater plant for a high tank level. And then we have, as far as capital projects go, we have three capital projects that are left over from 2024 that are still in progress. Hopefully get them wrapped up as soon as possible. And then at the authority meeting last week, we did get three partial capital projects approved for the wastewater plant, purchase of two central fugue motors, purchase of the parts required for the aeration diffuser sock replacement, and the rebuilding of one of the three wastewater filters. Next meeting, I will, in my next packet, I will have some approvals for the water plant capital projects. And then for December, we were thirty thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty-seven cents under budget for the month, and for year-end, we were under budget thirteen thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
Any questions, council? No questions here. We appreciate what everybody's doing at Infomark to to keep our plants operating. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the December Infomark report for the Lititz Borough Water Treatment and Wastewater Facilities.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Steve, let me just take a.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Sorry about that. Let me just take a moment. We had a few committee meetings here. We had the Water Sewer Committee meeting on January fifteenth. We we had a great meeting, just discussed the just how we're getting organized for all the projects we have set up for 2025. So that was, they were all listed, and just good coordination discussed there. We also established some of our committee goals, which I'll read just a little bit later. The Lititz Borough Authority met last week at seven o'clock, as as Doug just mentioned. We reorganized two positions on that on that board, and then we we did approve the purchases for equipment, the Keane pump, the PSI motor, and the replacement aeration diffuser, right? And then we also talked about this nutrient credit that Nate was able to get a higher return, I think while he shopped it around, which was great. And then we also looked at how the Lititz Borough Authority is organized and how it's how that interaction is, how it's structured between the Lititz Borough and the Lititz Borough Authority. So it's important, as some changes may be coming down the road in 2020, or no, 2030. So we just need to start understanding that relationship. MS four did not meet this past month. And then finally, would like to share with the public just the goals of the Water Sewer Committee. There's a few of them. The first two are from last year. We're going to keep them. We continue to work on evaluating the water user fee using the capital plan that was updated for both the water facility and the wastewater facility, and to determine a cost of what a quarterly future rate may look like. We we had no rate increase in 2025, but we are looking to the future and what that what that might need to be. We're creating a multi-year capital improvement plan for the water and wastewater facilities. Third goal is to implement federal-led service line replacement requirements for the Lititz residents, including communication and remediation of activities to meet that timeline, and that's an ongoing project. The things that we've added new for this year are to develop a fund balance policy for the water fund and the sewer fund. We're also to evaluate the pros and cons of requesting homeowners to perform regular sewer cleanouts and replace sewer caps. And finally, our final goal of the year is to begin planning for the operational changes between the authority and the borough in 2030. And that's discussions around an agreement that we have. So we've, we need to start getting ready for that, and that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Ken.
I just have one quick correction. The MS four committee did meet on January fourteenth. I'm sorry, Ken, I misunderstood the question, but there is no, nothing's to report. Nothing's of significance to report from that.
Thanks, Mary.
Yep.
All right, nothing further from water and wastewater. We're going to move on to streets and traffic.
Okay. First off is a, it's, we want to advertise the 2025 paving bid. It's the 2025 paving plan includes one point two miles of roadway, forty ADA ramps, and three thousand four hundred eighty-five linear feet of curbs. So our goal is to hit, is to pave on Cardinal, Bluebird, Robin, Maple Street, parts of East Orange, North Lane, and South Cedar Street. Does anybody from council have questions on that? I know you read the letter about that. Maybe.
That's good.
I'd like to make a motion to advertise the 2025 paving bid.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
All right, I've got one special event. It's the Lititz Rec Center's eleventh annual triathlon. It's going to be on Sunday, August tenth, 2025. Going to be at the Lititz Rec Center from eight AM to eleven AM. They're going to swim three hundred meters, or three hundred miles, I'm sorry, three hundred miles? It better be meters, geez. In the Lititz Springs pool, they'll be there all day. Fifth, they're going to bike fifteen point eight miles, and they're going to run a five K. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event for the Lititz Rec Center's eleventh annual triathlon.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
And just one other thing I wanted to mention, I'll be updating the 2025 goals next month for the streets and traffic.
Tania, I had a quick question regarding, and I don't know if we need to pass this on to staff, but this, in 2024, we completed the repaving curbs, street trees on South Spruce Street, and I've noticed that there are some patches already in the road there. Is there any information anybody can share about what the the source, what the reason was why we had to have patches in our brand-new?
My guess would be UGI. My guess would be UGI as it had in the past, but I'm curious to hear.
Possibly.
Thank you.
Yeah, so when when the paving was done and we inspected everything, there was some some issues with it. So Scott and Andy from Public Works, they went out and looked at everything, and those were the repairs that the paver had to do because they weren't up to our standards or our specs.
Okay. So will that be taken into consideration in terms of bids received and evaluated for this next?
Yeah, so Andy and I have talked about it, and he's expressed his, you know, concern to make sure that we're choosing a high-quality contractor, not just a lowest bid. That does get a little tricky from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, they have to.
So more to come, we actually get the bids, but just keep your fingers crossed for for some good.
Fortunately, it's the Pennsylvania. I mean, you can go through qualifications, they have to. We had an issue, what was it, second half a few years ago? We had a similar issue where we actually had to go back to warranty, and they had to do different. But we had similar conversations in this case. Was it the same contractor?
No, it was a different contractor.
Okay. We went, I think it might have been Mary before you guys came on, but there was something significant with second we had to go back through because it didn't meet the standard. So we had to get some concessions from them if they didn't meet the spec requirement.
Well, I'll just want to make note that that's terribly disappointing, given all of the money that we're putting into our streets, and hope that we're able to get a good quality product this coming year.
All right. Tania, anything else? You're good? All right, Ken, back to you on finance.
Okay, there's about three items of business to to share with council. The first is the the general fund year-end report is in front of you, as well as the month-end report for January. Let's start with the year-end. Right now, we've confirmed all of the revenue. It's accurate. We've done an internal audit there, and what we actually received was about three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars over budget. So some examples of items that were, came in over budget are real estate transfer tax, the local service tax, street opening permits, interest earnings and refunds from prior years. Those are all examples what drove some extra revenue into our year-end report for 2024. What we don't have is all of our expenses in at this time. They still need to be confirmed, and so we plan on having a year-end report at at the next council meeting, okay? That's where we stand there. When you look at your your report for January of 2025, what you see is a normal month. It's usually a light expense month and very little in revenue. So we did outspend our revenue, but that's normal. That'll catch up when taxes start coming in in the spring.
So Ken, do you have any expectations about where we will end up with expenses? And the reason we don't have that information is we're waiting on some documents from the bank and other statements?
Yeah, I do. I think it's, right now, it's in draft form, so it's not finalized. But when we do have what we expect to have, we'll have, our revenue will have exceeded our expenses by about three hundred and forty thousand dollars for the year.
Are you going to be making any comments about 2025, our efforts to look at cost containment?
Actually, I'm, thank you. That's coming up here in our goals. Yeah, you're right. Okay. If there's any other questions? Okay, can I make a motion to approve the financial statement for January of 2025?
Second.
Second.
Excuse me. A motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Okay, the next item of business here is just to address some of our goals as as a finance committee. So the the top two are from last year, and that's to maintain or improve the Lititz Borough Standard and Poor's double-A financial rating. Number two is to establish a funding plan for capital projects based on the capital scorecard. And then what is new follows now. Initiate the development of a water fund balance policy that aligns with Moody's or Standard and Poor's rating criteria, subsequently pass the policy to the Water and Sewer Committee to ensure it meets the operational requirements of the water plant. Next one is initiate the development of a sewer fund balance policy that aligns with Moody's or Standard and Poor's rating criteria, and subsequently pass the policy to the Water and Sewer Committee to ensure it meets the operational requirements of the sewer plant. The next area is borough operations. And before I say the the goal, I think that I speak for all of council that we're very interested in in looking for efficiencies as we operate a government. And so finance is is prepared to start, and we're, our goal is to identify expense reduction initiatives while maintaining the service levels the borough residents expect. So we have just put out a memo dated January twenty-fourth to our department heads in the borough, asking for a couple of things. One is we wanted to give a timeline of when scorecards for capital policy request are to be turned in. That's in February. We also put together our budget deadlines. This year, the finance committee would like to have all departmental budgets due on September eighth, and then we have some follow-through there for for each of the departments. And then under operational efficiencies, we're looking for some leadership in our departments to find five areas for cost reduction or of some nature, and we're asking for that to be completed by May nineteenth. And so that'll be the first time we can report on some of these activities is is that date, unless we receive something earlier. The final goal for the finance committee is to educate council on debt. And this is debt related to the general fund, and that ties into the GOBON and the 2020 note. There are some things coming that we want you to be aware of, how to manage in two or three years from now, and to be prepared as we move forward, taking care of the borough. Those are our goals, Steve.
Great report, and definitely some great goals there, Ken.
So we know that 2025 is going to be a year to have conversation about for operations. So I applaud the finance committee goals to manage a process, to look at these costs. We know that our residents expect a high level of service, but there are limited revenues available, tax revenues are limited, federal support is drying up, and our residents in times are overwhelmed with rising costs. So your efforts to take a look at that is applauded. I look forward from the personnel community. I look forward, from the personnel community's perspective, and a member of the council, to, uh, uh, work with you and the committee, or you and, and the departments accountable to accomplish this. I think it'll be really helpful to us as we go forward with our 2026 budgeting. So thank you for your creativity.
Thanks, Jerry. We're open to suggestions as well. So thank you.
All right. You good?
Yeah.
Moving on to personnel and benefits. Gary, I believe you've got a couple here.
That's me. First of all, I'm, um, happy to announce that Officer Spencer Moser was hired as a police officer with the Lidditz Borough Police Department in June of 2023. Spencer graduated the HACC Police Academy in December of, of 2023. Spencer has received excellent training to, uh, the Lankas, the Lidditz Borough Police Department fill training officers, and several courses provided through, here's an acronym, Gary, M-P-O-E-T-C. That's a pretty important process in other agencies. Uh, this is a recommendation from Chief Nye. Spencer has done an excellent job, and it, and is an asset to the Lidditz Borough Police Department. Spencer will receive additional training to further educate him in law enforcement field. So the chief is recommending that Borough Council release Spencer from his one-year probationary status and make him a regular police officer with the Lidditz, with the Lidditz Borough Police Department, effective December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four. So I will move that the council approve, uh, that change.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Yeah, I think, uh, wanna make any more comment about that, chief?
No, I.
He's here, so. I recognize.
I'll share Spencer coming up. I, I vividly remember sitting in your interview a year plus ago, and the energy and passion, that was what we all talked about when you came out of that. And obviously, it sounded like you've continued that energy and passion for the role that you're serving the community. So I'm very fortunate and thankful, uh, on the decision that we made, the Personnel Committee that was on at the time made. I mean, it was, we could tell you, this was what you were made for when you were in that interview.
I appreciate that.
You wanna say anything, or you're not a speech guy? That's fine, we're not gonna put you on pressure.
I appreciate it.
Even though Mike's trying, there's no pressure.
I do, I do appreciate, um, I, I find myself fortunate to be here, um, to serve this community. I've had a great experience so far. Um, I just look forward to many more years to come, so.
I remember from that interview, Kikaliko football guy, right?
Sir.
I remember that.
That's right, sir. And I graduated at Kikaliko, so you look at this.
I, I remember his interview vividly. So, thank you for.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else?
Any other comments?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, uh, just a couple of quick things about Spencer. Um, so I've had the opportunity to work with Spencer this past year. So he actually took his written test in January of 2023. So he's been dedicated and a student of this profession for two years now. Um, a lot's been asked of him. When, when you're the new guy, you fill a lot of holes. Um, in June, Spencer had to fill a lot of scheduling deficiencies we had, uh, on short notice. And, uh, in that span of time, uh, he's also, uh, become a father and a husband as well. So he's not only managed that, but also, um, his, his drive in the profession. So I'm, just wanted to get up briefly to say that we're very proud of him, very proud of him, he has a lot of potential, and, uh, he works very hard. So he's definitely an asset to the community, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for mentoring and guiding him. All right?
Yep.
Jerry?
Next. All right, I'm delighted tonight to, uh, update you on a process that's taken some time. Uh, the Personnel Committee was tasked with selecting the next, uh, Chief of Police for Lidditz Borough. We conducted a detailed and transparent process, which included obtaining input from borough employees and residents through questionnaire, developing a role-specific, specific position profile, and conducting interviews with two highly qualified internal candidates. We, um, looked at, uh, the, the interview committee, uh, interviewed the two candidates with fifteen standardized questions, so they were asked the same questions. And we are delighted tonight unanimously to recommend that Sergeant Jared Han be our next, uh, Lidditz Borough Police Chief. Um, our rationale is that his dynamic and proactive leadership style, which was reflected in his influence and dominance disc profile, aligns with the department's need for results-driven and a visionary leader. He had a comprehensive understanding of the department's current and future challenges, and has, was able to articulate actionable strategies to address these issues. Strong interpersonal skills that foster trust, collaboration, and alignment across all stakeholders, both with the department and in the broader borough. Exceptional performance during the interview process where his answers demonstrated depth, insight, and eagerness to lead with integrity and purpose. With his leadership, we believe the department is poised to continue fostering public trust, enhancing community engagement, and addressing community operational challenges for a safer and more cohesive Lidditz Borough. Uh, he met all the general qualifications that we, uh, outlined in the profile. Uh, we were looking not only for excellent police officer, we were looking for a leader, a department leader that's going to take the challenges the department has now or will have in the future, and move us forward. And we believe unanimously that he is the, the person to do that. Of course, we always look for references, and the references we received on Officer Han were outstanding. I'll just read you a couple of quotes, uh, from some of those. We asked a question like, "How would you define Jared Han's leadership style?" Answer: "Jared, Jared is calm and thoughtful. He always takes an extra second to think things through and evaluate things. Jared has a command presence. Jared's demeanor is consistent, and he never appears to be overwhelmed." Uh, the other question was, um, "How actively did Jared engage with community leaders and residents to address local concerns?" And this reference says, "I observed Jared's engagement with a very varied sector of leaders across law enforcement, social service agencies, and the judiciary. And note, Jared has intimate and developed great characteristics which lead to others trusting him." Another question is, "How did Jared demonstrate strong ethical principles in his decision-making? His role as a P-L-E-A-C assessor. There, there have been times when an agency, due to their longstanding method of providing police services and culture, did not feel that he's standard acceptable to them. Sergeant Han has never backed down from holding the agency accountable, the standard, but instead worked with and convinced the agency why the standard is, is recognized the best practices that all law enforcement needs to embrace." So he, uh, received excellent, uh, excellent, excellent, uh, uh, references. When the mayor and I met with the, um, with Jared and shared our decision, we outlined a number of, of specific expectations that we want him to work on. And I asked that he not tell me whether or not he would accept the position until the mayor and I went through those expectations. Those expectations deal with department costs, deal with structure and services of the department, looking at how the department works cooperatively with the other departments in the borough, and really emphasizing our community policing where there's a strong presence in the community among our police department. Jared indicated his willingness enthusiastically meet those expectations. Uh, Jared and I are reworking on identifying steps to accomplish those with timeframes, so that when his position is officially, uh, announced in May, when the chief steps down, there will be a plan in place to, uh, make sure that those expectations are structured with a timeframe associated with each of them. So I am delighted to enthusiastically make this recommendation, uh, that the Personnel Committee and the Interview Committee unanimously approve. Um, I would like the mayor, uh, to make any comments, uh, based on your involvement. One of the things I tried to do through the process, keep the mayor and the chief involved in the process, so they knew what was going on. So thank you, Mayor, for your participation.
Uh, this, this, uh, process was out of, uh, I would have dealt with, uh, two chiefs being, um, hired, and this would be the third. And this was by far the most, um, rigorous and, uh, focused interview process. And I have, I have to thank Jerry for all his hard work on this. And through the whole thing, it worked out that I feel that we have the best candidate, and that, uh, Lidditz will be in good hands going forward.
Thank you. Chris, would you like to make any comments?
Uh, I just wanna echo the, everything that you have said, Jerry, and especially what the mayor said in regards to, um, the diligence and the forethought that you put into the process of, of the interview and the preparation work that went in, in advance to make sure that we identified what we needed for our community prior to interviewing, uh, candidates for this position. So, and I'm very excited to have Sergeant Han be our next, uh, our next Chief of Police.
Thank you. Steve, you were part of the process?
Yeah, just, um, not to be redundant with all that, but just for the public to understand, and Jerry hit on a couple of different things. I mean, he was very deliberate in having a public process that was helping us define the expectations of what we were looking before we even started, you know, looking for candidates. It involved public, it involved, um, people within, you know, the staff here. It involved, you know, even some of the assistant police staff. He had disc profiles, so we understood the personalities of the individuals. Some of you probably have done those, Myers-Briggs, discs. It was, uh, very professionally done. The interviews were very structured, as Jerry said, going through the references, having questions for the references, questionnaires. We don't know Jerry did do some of this in his past life, so, uh, it was great to have that resource within council to facilitate this. And I would just share with you all, it was, I, I was looking back, Jerry, this was almost not a nine-month, six, nine-month process. Not that it was long, but I just want everybody to know this did not happen over a couple of weeks. Uh, in order for each of the values of these steps to occur throughout the process, it needed that time. And it needed that time as Jerry was intentional about bringing others, that it wasn't just the Personnel Committee, or it wasn't just him. There was a lot of hands involved in the process. So again, I applaud you for the process, but I want the public to know there was a lot of steps, uh, to get to this, what we believe is, is the best decision.
Thank you. So do we?
You have to make a motion and vote on it.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, uh, appoint Sergeant Jared Han as the next Lidditz Borough Police Chief, and that'll be effective May two, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we will, yeah, that's all I need to.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved? Jerry, one?
Go ahead.
One thing I wanna you to ask or just share, I wanna ask, so, share with the public, just to give a timeframe on, uh, Chief Nye's timeframe, just so everyone's aware as you shared the, the May second, so they understand that.
So I just, I think, and we, we've talked about this, so you might wanna come here, back me up. So it's my understanding that Chief Nye's, uh, will, uh, will go on some type of leave, May, May, uh, May second. Uh, between May second and August sometime, you'll be, continue to be, uh, on payroll to accomplish your payout for overtime and, and sick leave and that kind of thing. It's, yeah, yeah. So, uh, so we'll, we'll then, well, we need to work out what arrangements, what chief duties will be accomplished during that May second through the time that you finish. And we're working on, um, those duties right now as we speak. So we'll probably see, uh, Jared Han as the interim or acting chief, all duties responsible for police operations, effective May two. However, you will still be the Chief of Police, since you are on the payroll. Is that how that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, we will work on some kind of a separate.
We'll work on the transition definition over the next couple of months. But obviously, the intention, again, it's for the public that we were going to have an overlap, obviously. Sure, any of your jobs, your roles, you don't want, uh, one leader to leave today and a new one start tomorrow. We wanted some overlap there, so we're gonna have that. We'll figure out exactly what we're going to call you between now and May second. Uh, but we'll work on that.
And I would simply add, I mean, we, we've had the, uh, the conversation about what that transition plan looks like, ensuring there's a continuity of operations and administrative oversight of the agency. So zero concern or hesitation that this will be anything but a smooth transition. Obviously, we're going to communicate that defined transition plan to our staff, to council, and also the community, just to make sure everybody understands what that transition moving forward will look like.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, we are beginning to look at, I don't know if we're calling it a contract or an agreement or a memorandum of understanding between the council and Jared in terms of duties and responsibilities, reporting, goals and objectives, actually, we'll meet tomorrow to start that process. So, uh, the, the work continues, even though we made a final decision. I'm, I'm really excited about this. I think this is a, a great thing for the borough. Thank you, Chief, for your mentoring of Jared during these years. Uh, it's great to have someone from our current ranks, uh, come to the forefront to lead this aw- awesome department here in Lidditz Borough.
Jared, anything you wanna share or say beyond?
Sure, just, it, it's an incredible honor. I'm very proud. I've been a member of this agency for twenty-two years, but I've been a resident of Lidditz my entire life. So certainly I have, uh, an interest in seeing not only the department succeed, but also the community. There's not a day off that I have that I'm not in town with family or with friends or associates. So, uh, I'm excited to see the, the future success of not only the agency, but the, the community as well, and is a collaborative effort, of course. And I'm looking forward to, uh, being the leader and providing the resources and the support that the staff needs, that council needs, and the community needs. It's humbling. I appreciate your trust and your support, and ready to get started.
Thank you.
So my understanding, yeah, thank you. So that will be more an official swearing-in.
Right.
Point, uh, beyond this, so thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council or public?
Congratulations.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead. Now you can sit down, Jared, I think.
Thank you, Jared.
To the public, questions or comments on it? David, come on up.
Thank you, it's Dave Carson, two twenty-sixth street. I have a cold, so I also apologize to my voice. Two questions. One is, there was discussions after November budget meeting and beyond about potential alternative forms of the department. Regionalization, reorganization, whatever. So my first question is, how does this impact it? And how would it be brought into that structure and those decisions? And number two, I'm gonna make a comment, I'm not taking this, don't take this out of context. My question is, is there ever a thought, I don't know this gentleman, seems like we always promote from within. And I don't want saying that's a bad thing. Why, is there a policy that we don't look outside the organization? Is that a written policy, a goal? Is there reasons we don't do that? So number one, I can say, how's this affect the regionalization, organization, and potential, how do? how do we put that in about, you know, external policies as external candidates?
So David, to your first question, one of the expectations is that the new police chief will work hard to assess the department's functions, including staffing, equipment and cost to determine the most appropriate and cost-effective way to provide policing services to the community.
Okay.
So that, that, that will be looked at. It's part of what, what Ken already mentioned, that we're looking for the department heads to take serious look at what's going on in our departments, where there can be cost savings, if any. But we want to make sure that we continue to provide quality services our community expects.
Sure.
With our police department, so.
I was suggesting maybe, I think the council should be making policy decisions, not just department heads. The council is in charge of the whole borough, so the council should be leading those discussions, not, in my opinion, department heads.
It starts at the department.
Starts.
And then it comes to council for ratification and clarification, absolutely.
I'm suggesting not just ratification, but leading the process. You're, you're in charge of the budget, you know the cost numbers, so I think as part of your whole budgetary process, that should be something that you can look at. I'm not going to get into debate about that, but I think that's something that, where the, there were things brought up at the November budget meeting about cost issues. So I think that should be in the forefront, and I understand that there was some reaching out by council members to various state agencies for assistance. So I'm just wondering if that has been done, what's the status? And then again, just to follow up, my time ending here, because Steve cuts me off, is the potential, why we don't ask for interviews outside the department?
Yeah, sure. My, my, my thinking about that is that we start internally. It's good morale, it's a good way to get started. We went through a process that Steve already mentioned to vet the two internal candidates. Those two candidates would not have met the criteria that we set up, then absolutely it would have made sense to go outside the department to look for somebody.
Okay.
Remember, we have a probationary period, a time for assessment, and so we will keep reporting back to you how we're working towards some of these action, some of these goals with action steps that we will put together.
Okay. And an answer to my other question about the outside contacts with state agencies like D C E D, what's the status on that?
Sure, one, one of the, we've got, we've collected some information. One of the, one of the things we'll do in the assessment process is reach out to many sources, other burrows, other state entities to get help to make a good thorough evaluation where we want to go.
Is there a timeframe? Is there a, is there kind of game plan for that?
That'll be, that'll be publicized, or that'll be worked out as for Jared and I work through our goals.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, David, for those questions. And just to share with the public on those two comments, I mean, the, I'll just say the potential restructuring or accountability of budget, something that Jared knows very well, it was even talked about in the interview with both candidates. There was a lot of the questions, even the question that you, that David brought up that were brought up during the interview. We wanted to challenge both candidates on both of those points. And then looking outside, I think the point that we will, we discussed amongst the Personnel Committee was, you know, we had very defined expectations by Jerry's great process, and if we didn't unanimously feel like they checked to those boxes, then we start to look externally. I'll say professionally, it's the same thing I do within my organization. If, start internally, if nobody really hits that mark, then you start looking externally. Kind of the way that Jerry led the process, I will say, without a doubt, we actually had two very qualified candidates that, that hit those marks. All right, Jerry, anything else on personnel?
No, Personnel Committee has not meant to define its goals for next year, and we'll do that this month. But I just wanted to report more quickly, we had some goals from last year, negotiate the police department, Public Works Union contract, create implementation process for the next borough police, update procedures to recruit and appoint volunteers to board committees. The committees updated their purpose statements, and those statements are included in the website. During the year, we appointed 10 individuals to various board committees and commissions. And I have a list of seven people right now who have volunteered time, but I don't have any positions for. So we were figuring out ways to keep people engaged in that. We have one of the gentlemen here tonight who's volunteered. That's an indication that the borough residents are eager and wanting to get engaged in the process, and we're trying to find ways to continue that. So that was a success through this past year. That's all I have, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Chris, hopefully you're still on, you can hear us. Do you have your report on planning?
Yes, I do. We have one action item tonight for planning. A memo from DMA Associates dated January 20th for the escrow reduction request number seven for the Wilbur Land Development Plan. The current escrow's account balance is $129,816.39. DMA is recommending a reduction of $123,211.99, leaving a balance of $6,604.40. DMA's memo does identify five, I'll call them action items. So we just want to be cognizant of that, that there are some, just some, a few areas that need to be addressed before the remaining balance will be, will be released. But for tonight, if there aren't any questions or comments from council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation, reduction amount of the escrow account in the amount of $123,211.99.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to zoning, Mary.
Zoning, we actually met to discuss our goals, and let me just pull up my notes here real quickly. Zoning and code enforcement has several goals for the coming year. I'm sorry, I keep clicking on a link and not getting my note. So first goal is to evaluate and revise as necessary the rental inspection fees and procedures as possible. So we'll be working with Finance Committee on that. I believe you're developing some recommendations that we'll then take under consideration in zoning code enforcement, work together on that. Second goal, review property maintenance code and landscaping requirements for consistency with strengthening Community 2030 as it relates to climate mitigation and watershed health. And that is it for our goals. We had two goals for the coming.
Great.
And that's, that's all of my report. Any questions?
Question. All right.
Thank you.
And building and grounds?
No, no report for this meeting.
And I believe we may have members of the public here who are potentially interested in speaking about skate park. I'm not sure.
Yep. I'm one out of one, guys. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary.
Good call, Mary.
Always looking out for my friends, the skaters.
Where's your skateboards?
If you can just start by giving your name and your address.
My name's Nicholas. I live at 102 South Spur Street.
I'm at Ananya Mason. I live on 227 South Spur Street.
Great, thank you.
Just one thing I'd like to point out is that the skate park, skateboarding to us, it's like a passion that we love, like, like artists like to paint on a canvas. It's a way that we express ourselves, and we like to generate new ideas and host events to bring community together, not only externally from people who don't live in Lititz, but especially the people that live in that community, to let them show that we like to have a safe environment where kids can come and feel safe, be able to learn new skills, and just have a safe environment to have fun productively. Today, I work at Johnson Johnson, well, now it's Kenview, but I get off work, I go home, and I just spent about two hours today shoveling all the snow out. That way it dries out. And today we had a whole group of skaters down there already skateboarding, and it was dry, and it was covered in snow earlier. So like, we would just want to keep it clean and know that we really appreciate the new and improved skate park, that it's concrete, and we're just forever grateful. And we would like to even start learning how to get permits to host events this summer to bring people in, you know? It's just a thing we love to do, and we just want to say thank you for the new skate park. Is there anything you would like to say?
Yeah, I've, I've lived in Lititz majority of my life. I've seen the transformation these past couple of years, and especially the parts that you guys contributed, and I'm very grateful what you guys do for other skateboarders in the community in this very small town. It almost feels we go unrecognized sometimes, but then the little bits that we do get, it, it feels really rewarding, you know? And it goes a long way for us. And I heard that you guys just signed the 20K bill for us, and that, that's very, very rewarding for us to know that we're going to keep being able to build on and keep progressing our local skate park. And like he said, we want to bring in a safe place for kids to learn new things and just bring in people from the outside community or people who don't even enjoy skateboarding, just come and watch something fun if it's not part of their everyday thing, you know? It's, it's come and watch some people skate and enjoy the time. It's always a good energy down there. We try and keep it a safe place and as clean as possible. We try and clean up all the graffiti that goes on and break all the leaves in the fall time, leaf blower all the time, shovel when, when it's snowy. Me personally, I was there when we got that little bit of snow. I was there for six and a half hours myself, shoveling it all out. So.
We appreciate you guys that you're not on borough staff, but you're, you're helping to keep, you know, the amenities that the community has without anybody asking you to.
Yeah.
That's very appreciated.
I feel that it's almost a responsibility as skaters that we have to step up and take care of our spaces if we want to continue having them the way they are and keep seeing them progress and grow, you know? It's, it's a, the small factors that play a large part.
We've, we've talked about it in the past. It's, it's always active. I, I'm not a skater, but I've been, I'm at the basketball courts a lot over the summer with different teams that I coach, and there's always people there. I've coached down to softball fields, and every time I'm there, I can hear all the clamor up there of the skating going on. So it's good for us to know it's actively being used, that it's not collecting dust and it's not a ghost town. There, there's enough interest within the community that we continue to contribute to that. I will say, if, I'm not saying we're going to be doing any major changes, but if you see recommendations or thoughts, there is a Parks Committee that's within this group. Elijah can let you know exactly when that is, if you ever have recommendations, thoughts, and, you know, be something they might be able to plan out in years. It's not going to be something.
Yeah.
Obviously, if there's expenses to it, that's, that's bigger discussion.
Yeah.
And then I think on the permits, you know, if you have events, usually those, chief has the form, the new police chief will have the form, it starts there. And we had one tonight, but it would kind of go through the similar process, you know, if we felt that it's fitting, obviously, if the group is self-funding, so.
Yeah, with the events like he was talking about, it would be, a lot of the money would be, like, we would be planning it more towards like a fundraiser kind of event to put more money back into the park, and a lot of those proceeds would go immediately right back into, into the skate park to help keep progressing and grow.
Yep.
Especially for the local skate team guild here in From Lititz, it's a nice place for us to, to have an outlet for the team to go and skate, and it, to, we wanted to just see, keep letting it grow with, with all, with all of us.
Yeah, great.
It's too bad our newspaper reporter left before you spoke. I think that this would have been a great story for the record.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be here for other meetings, because like I said to him, I have a good friend, J D., who owns and runs Holistic Skate Shop out in Reading, and he's been going to borough meetings to help get the new Reading Skate Park bill and creating the Red, Reading Skate Park Association. And I figured, why not just step up to the plate and do it for our own community or self, just to, you know, close mouths, don't get fed, and to just voice your opinion, just to let people know, like, we're here and we just like to, you know, express our artist's creativity just on a skateboard.
Well, like I said, I definitely, you're welcome to come here. There's a lot of discussions at this Parks Committee I'm referring to, it's a once a month meeting, where they might be talking about stuff. They really only come to us if it's, you know, a big change or something, so there might be discussions occurring within that group. I believe I was on it before, and I remember that often be a standard agenda item where they would talk about the skate park, so it might be worthwhile, again, occasionally to attend that, just to hear what's going on too, and maybe to, to share your voice there.
Steve, if I could jump in, Scott's here, and we often have some of our park meetings at, at a spot, at a park, and maybe we ought to schedule one and invite you guys to join us and just take a look.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the Lancaster County Skate Park Association has been really the one that's been the advocate for this. They did a plan on their own back in, I think it was like 2017.
Yep.
And this has been following those pieces. If you're familiar with Rob Reed, he's been sort of our main contact with this. And I know he's had, he reached out to me and said, you know, there's some other people that are interested in, in doing some things. I was like, well, especially if the borough residents have them come, so I'm glad to see you here. We are doing in, in kind of a piecemeal phase of 20,000 every year. It's not because Borough Council is trying to be stingy, but if we go higher than that, we have to bid it out. And if we bid it out, we can't have the preferred contractor be doing it, which is why we have the, the contribution. So see me after a meeting if you're okay staying, I'd love to get your information and just have some discussion, because I think Rob was talking about fundraisers too, so it'd be good to see that come together.
Yeah, I would definitely like to get some fundraisers in the work this coming spring and summer as soon as possible. That's, that was something I, I've even, my parents own the Kingdom Inc. here in Lititz as well. They've said that they would sponsor, and I've talked to other local companies as well as, such as Dosido, and they all said that they would sponsor as well. So I would, I think it's not, it's bigger than just skaters. I think it's something that we should bring the whole community together into.
Great. Well, thank you both for your time and your energy and helping us continue to make that an asset within the community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming.
With that, Mary, or Ken, or nothing else? Okay. Moving on to regional comp plan, Mary.
Yep, regional comp plan. So the final plan has been posted on the website, Strengthening Community 2030. The Planning Commission is continuing to work on amendments to the zoning ordinance related to some of the vacant developable tracks in the borough. So those are very good discussions they're having, very thoughtful. We're moving towards both changing the, the district, but then also doing some amendments to the text of those districts. So good discussion, worthwhile for people who are interested to come in and be a part of that. The Implementation Committee is meeting later this week, and we are excited to begin our work with Warwick and Elizabeth Townships on implementation of the regional comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer any questions or invite Elijah to add anything he might have.
The only thing I would add is, based on the Planning Commission's request, one of the landowners is actually going to come and talk about possible future development at the next Planning Commission as a sketch plan.
Oh, terrific.
Not even as a formal, but this is the one that was interested in developing. They reached out earlier this month and said, what's the status? And I'm glad they're going to come, so they'll have, we, it's a little bit of a collaborative discussion.
Okay, so that'll be Tuesday night at 7:00 here in council chambers for that discussion and looking at what somebody is considering in terms of how we get more housing in the community. So the intent is to do, to go to a high-density zoning and allow for more types of housing as well as more housing per acre.
And I think the other thing, just to add on, is it's not just add the density, but it's making sure that it fits in with the community.
Absolutely. And that's why our commission is being so thoughtful and looking at all of the provisions. So again, if you haven't been there, you're missing a lot of good discussion and fun, so come on out Tuesday night.
All right. Thank you, Mary. I believe that is all of the council member forums. I would ask each council member, there was a couple of goals shared tonight, goals shared from the last month, I would ask either February or March. I will say, I don't, let's not hit on all of them in one month, but let's figure out how to do that. Would like each subcommittee chair to make sure that you share the goals in either February or March. And in doing so, I would also like you to report, last year was the first time we do it, and I'm, I'm all about, and Jerry and I've had this conversation, I'm all about having goals and expectations, but I'm. And in doing so, I would also like you to report, last year was the first time we do it and I'm, I'm all about, and Jerry and I've had this conversation, I'm all about having goals and expectations, but I'm. I'm more about having the metrics defined to those expectations. If they were gonna build five widgets, did we build five or six widget? So just if you could briefly share status of that goal from last year. And then share if you're carrying it over or what the new goals and I would also. Guide to two or three goals, not ten. Two or three, I've got groups that I've worked with before that, you know, they'll try to have twenty of them and then you're disappointed cuz you only got two of them done. So two, I would say maximum three. Uh, just plan to share those in February and March. And talk to Elijah just because um, I don't wanna hit on all of them all in one month, otherwise that'll. Ninety percent of the meeting, so talk to Elijah and say, hey guy, I'm ready to share mine in February or ready to share in March. All right, moving on, um, report of the Borough Engineer. Scott, you have anything?
Did provide a written report. Of what the highlights were. Mostly, we dealt with the Wilbur Project, preparing the ASBIL review and the escrow reduction that you already addressed tonight. We have been reviewing a project for a single-family house that's be, being developed on South Cedar Street. I think we got that one pretty much to the finish line. You may be signing plans here soon. Yep, already done, sign, so, so that one's moving forward, so. Some more housing on a, on a vacant lot. We're seeing that on a couple of spots where people are coming in and, and trying to develop lots of. Of, of record already and, and put some houses, houses in the borough. We did help look at that paving project. Um, list that you're, that you just approved earlier tonight, so those were the highlights that we had this month. I don't know if you have any other questions for me?
Yeah, quick question, Scott. Um, Christine alluded to this or, or mentioned it in the um, reduction of the escrow. For the Wilbur Project. Um, it concerns me that there are things that were identified during the last. Escrow Reduction and they still have not been addressed. Are you on top of that for this next round? Who is monitoring that? Make sure that they're in compliance.
Yeah.
Not saying that you're not on top of it. I'm not, I didn't mean.
I, I understand. Yeah, we, we'll keep track of those and, and what we do, um, the vehicle is that we're still holding some, some money for them. The remaining items are generally small sort of punchless type finishing, finishing items. We will not release the rest of that money until they're. They're, they're done. The borough or our ability to, to force them to do those last couple of things is a little limited. Um, you're not in a position where you'd say you're gonna call that security and, and make them do it yet cuz they're still, they're proceeding in a normal pace sort of. For, for finishing a project. A lot of these items will be likely finished up in spring. Once they have the ability to get in and stabilize things and sort of fix a couple of the, the, the items that weren't quite able to be done over the.
And their motivation is obviously financial because they're, they're paying interest, letters of credit uh, for the escrows, so they. I will say, I, just from my professional career, a lot of times they'll forget about those and that's where Scott will always remind them that, hey, by the way, you still have a hundred thousand dollars. Might wanna get, stop paying interest on that and get out here and.
Yeah, yeah, we wish we could hold a bigger number, but legally we're only allowed to hold for the items that are, that are remaining. If we held money for something that was done just to. Leverage them, yeah, we, we would, we all would get, get in trouble for that, so we don't want, we don't wanna do that, but we'll definitely keep after them. This has been a good project. The developer and the contractor have been good to work with and, and we feel have been moving, moving through the project in a, in a good fashion.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you Scott. Uh, report, let's start by with the mayor, anything?
Uh, no report.
Chief? All right, we both had.
I, I had some questions.
Go ahead.
Overtime for um, police officers and we had some people in the pipeline, but I'm not sure where we're at with that, so.
You can see in the December report how much the overtime we had and uh, January is gonna be a little higher. Just because three of our officers went down to the, the presidential inauguration. So they spent quite a bit of time down there, but we will be reimbursed by the Metropolitan Washington Police Department for that time, so we're proud about average. As far as uh, overtime goes for January. As far as hiring goes. We're meeting actually with civil service next Tuesday to discuss it. I'm not exactly sure where we're at, be honest with you. I know we, we started with nine candidates. I think we're down to about maybe four. Jared still back there? About where we're at, I think? Yeah, four applicants, so that's where we're left, so.
Wow, so how, how soon, we, we entered this process fairly early and we're still now. Down to only three or four candidate. What's, kinda what's driving that?
Just people are not passing, the backgrounds not truthful in their interviews, you know, things are being found by the investigators that. Weren't brought out initially and we kinda make that as a red flag, so we're still hopeful we can get the two officers out of the remaining. Three or four that we have left. So I mean, I'm still looking at hopefully hiring, you know, either end of February, end of March. That's what we're looking for.
Chief, I was just curious. I saw an article in the uh, Lan- um, the Lancaster Newspaper dated Monday, December sixteenth. Where a whole new department was hired. Um, what's the difference in their, their hiring process and ours? They hired fifteen people, had a hundred applicants and they were able to complete that in a year. And we're looking for two officers. What's the, what's the big difference in our processes?
Good question. Maybe we were all, as all the chiefs, we were shocked that they could get that department up and running in that quick a time and we all. I didn't wanna say bet against the chief there. He's a good guy. I'm not sure how he accomplished it, to be honest with you. Most of the officers are officers that came from other departments. I'm not sure if officers were excited to start with a brand-new department. Uh, we just take, we're slow and deliberate. And I guess we'll see down the road if they have issues with the officers they hired. Maybe that'll tell to say, oh, maybe we shouldn't have hired that officer, so. We're very slow and deliberate and obviously we started this over the holidays too. And two investigators, Sergeant Dets and Detective Savage, had had some time off over the holidays. Wanted a death in the family, so it kinda pushed everything back a little bit too, so.
We have been looking for over two years, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and this wouldn't have happened if, you know, the two officers, when we hired, we hired Spencer, you know, if we wouldn't have had a basically let them go. We wouldn't be in this position, so it's kind of, this has been a slow-moving, you know, problem and. I'm sure it's gonna, hopefully when we get these two, we'll be pretty well set for a little while until Chief, uh, the new chief makes the decision. And it goes from there, so, yeah, I don't know and, and I, I kinda stepped back from the hiring process. Uh, I used to do it years ago, but uh, I haven't done it in many years, so I mean, I know they're actively working on it. He just had one of the applicants in today.
Could you, could you ask Dets possibly to come next month? Cuz I know he, he leads that.
Yeah, sure.
Jared also, just kinda give all of us an update on the, the status.
And we'll hopefully know more by then, that'll be another month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Yep, sure, go ahead.
Looking at the correspondence that we received from the school district. And as the former liaison with the school district. Had a conversation with Acting Superintendent Sobacon, Sobas.
Tron.
Sobachan.
Steve, just call him Steve, that's easier.
SS.
Uh, about the school resource officer. My understanding is that they had requested one a year or so ago and no action was taken. I'd like to know what the plan is at this point to pursue their requesting a school resource officer again and I think we need to. At least have some conversation about that, so I'm just wondering what the procedure is. And what we need to do in order to be prepared to respond to the school district about this request.
Okay, we, you know, last year I did meet with them and I told them the first step is to write a letter to the Borough Council to request that, so they finally got that taken care of. I'm gonna basically punt that to the next chief, I mean, because that's gonna be something that I won't be involved with. It's gonna be very difficult. I mean, you're gonna look at having to hire another officer, to be honest with you, uh, to, to fulfill that. And I started this SRO program many years ago, it was very successful. And at the end of time, the, the school district decided they want to go on a different avenue, make their own police department. And I believe now they've realized that the SRO is probably was the best route to go. So, Mayor, I can't answer all those questions because, like I said, my time here is limited and I don't feel. I need to get involved with that cuz it really wouldn't be advantageous. Will, will we be able to start somebody in September this year? I highly doubt it. Because we gotta be able to fill our roles already, just with the two officers. And then if we're looking to, to fill that position, we would look internally first to see if there's anybody be interested in it. If not, we'd have to either hire someone from the outside to go into that. And I, you know, you and I had talked about funding for that program. There is no way I would agree with the funding that we did in the past, because what happened is that SRO. Uh, was not permitted basically to take any vacation or off time during the school year. So most of the time during the summer, you really never even saw that officer, more than just a couple shifts out of the summer. So the school definitely benefited. As far as we did benefited, we really didn't. So I mean, I think that funding, in my opinion, would be much, much different uh, than it was in the past. Like, in the past it was fifty-fifty, it cannot be that way any longer. That's my opinion.
Okay, so I, I would just ask that we think about how we wanna. Follow up with this, with the school district. Tanaya is the new liaison with the school district. I don't wanna. Leave this hanging. The letter was received on January seventh, so.
Ken's got the comment.
Yeah, uh, uh, nice feedback. Thanks, Chief, for your answer. I, I think the timing. It's, it sets up, it sets up well for Jerry and, and the new chief to start uh, looking at that project uh, when, when they meet, so. But thank you for bringing it up. It's, it was definitely um, a school um, board approval, I think January fourth or sixth, so we got.
One question, so an SRO, are they a current, like, police officer or are they retired?
No, they're, they're active police officer. They have to have arrest powers. They could be retired from the department and then be rehired as a school resource officer, yes. And most school resource officers take special training that they go through, like we had, we had two, two resource officer, Officer Wolf was a resource officer and. Detective Savage, when they both take, took SRO training school, so there's a lot of ways you can kinda go at it. Uh, but we'd certainly would like to, uh, in my opinion, look at anybody here internally that would do it first. We wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend having a very brand-new officer, just new on the street like Spencer, I'll use him example. Having one year, I would not put him out there as an SRO. I mean, you should really have at least probably four, five years' experience on the street. Before you, you go out there. So there is plenty of officers out there that, that what they'll do as a career, they'll maybe retire and then become an SRO, but. They still are sworn officer, they'd have arrest powers here in the borough and we'd have to provide them training and uniforms and. Cause, you know, insurance, there's a lot more to it than what you really realize behind the scene would be like having another officer.
What about the current ones that serve there? They are retired from Ephraim?
Yeah, but they are not, they do not have, they are security. What, when, when John Scofield left here and started to work School District Police, they had arrest powers, very minimal arrest powers. And it was just too much to try to create a new police department. It's a lot of, cuz you know, there's a lot of things to go through, so they backed away from that. And went to security, so the, the two out there, which is uh, they both retired from Ephraim, it's a husband and wife. They do not have arrest powers, so anything that, any time there's an arrest or investigation, they can do an investigation, but we are the ones that actually. Make the arrest and they, they pass it on us. So I believe that's what they're looking for, is to have someone there, active. And can be involved with it right of ways and take it from step one to, to the end. And they do a tremendous job. They're very, we work very closely with them. They are always in contact with us, so. I mean, they do great, but I understand where they're coming from, from SRO, so.
Oh, I mean, a lot more discussions gotta happen before, yeah, I think personnel's gotta get involved, finance's gotta get involved. There, there's a lot of different groups that have to have discussions, I think. Before we can respond. Along with the, the new chief.
And school resource officer SRO, right? That's the acronym, okay. You knew that, didn't you?
You caught me.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? All right, moving on to report by managing directors, we have both Rob and Elijah's reports. Uh, Rob, you wanna, you're typing, so I'll start with Elijah then. Elijah, do you?
Yeah, I was writing, but yes, I can jump into my notes too.
Trying to see who wasn't.
Uh, so, few things to highlight. Um, one thing that you may be noticing um, with the Washington Boulevard light poles. Uh, one was recently hit uh, on South Broad Street. Uh, the new one that will go up is going to be black. They no longer make the color that we've used for years, so as ones are transitioned, they'll go to black. The other thing that is uh, needs to be noted is they're no longer supporting the sodium halide bulbs, which have been used there for. Fifteen-plus years. Everything's going to LED. So what we've had in the past is no longer an option with PPL, so anything new is being replaced in this one. Um, the LEDs are different than the ones that were evaluated fifteen years ago. Um, the ones that, there are actually LEDs up near the. Uh, Warwick Street Apartments, um, for those installations, so if there's concerns about light, which was the concerns in the past. Um, hopefully that's been addressed a little bit and that these LEDs also last a good while without turning the purple that you sometimes see with.
I'm assuming you've already thought about this, Elijah, but you've, I mean, I know there's pages in, in the Form-based code on those design standards, you're gonna amend those.
Those would need to be updated. Now, I think that. Says essentially it needs to be this color or Borough-approved alternative. If the only alternative we can have is black, then it has to be black.
It might just be worth, I mean, I can, if I, there are those pages so many times, there's a picture of those.
Right.
And it's in that.
Update that.
I would just make sure it updates so it doesn't create any confusion, cuz if you ask somebody to provide something, it's no longer available.
Are there any grants or anything that could help us? Funding of some sort? Change over those bulbs?
So, I think right now they're being basically, as they burn out, as they stop functioning, they're being switched over to LEDs, which is a whole. We essentially have to sign a new agreement with PPL. Um, they do encourage uh, switching over to LEDs. Sort of preemptively, but I don't know, last I looked that there wasn't a dramatic cost savings to those, cuz essentially you're still paying by pole. And it was a comparable cost.
We'll just do it as they burn out?
That's, yeah, we can look a little bit into it if needed, but while they encourage you to do the LEDs, it's more because it saves them energy and not necessarily. Eat the cost.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, other things to note, runabout line, uh, one, we're at the point now uh, where we essentially have to have a subdivision plan. Uh, to acquire the site uh, control. Um, the issue with that is, I think I mentioned this many months ago. The land that was supposedly provided from the school district to the rec center was never actually conveyed. It was signed, there's agreements. Uh, it just never went for that final step. I talked with Mike Davis about that uh, this morning. Uh, he said it is on his. Um, essentially on his plate and he's been talking with the school district attorney. Uh, he's hopeful to have an answer from them by the end of the week. Uh, we did receive the signed uh, easement for the right-of-way, which doesn't involve the land swap from them. It actually went to. The attorney's office. They got that late last week. So once we figure out that historic land swap. Then Scott can finish essentially drafting the plan, which is, I said, almost done. And then we can move forward with that and be ready for construction, but right now we just need that little bit of cleanup. One thing we are working on and discussing a lot is the Warwick Street Storage. Uh, this is a new owner for the storage units. They're proposing four stories as opposed to the two, uh, which has a lot more um, visual impact, obviously. Our zoning ordinance requires industrial uses to be screened from existing residential. It doesn't say just single-family homes, so that involves the apartments immediately to the south, about thirty feet away from it. So the one thing we've been working with them is um, they've been trying to show whether landscaping can screen and. Unfortunately, if you're viewing something from a fourth-story building, it's not a whole lot. So I received something actually right before this meeting. Uh, they're looking at architectural screening on at least the top three floors, so the bottom one. Um, which is about fifteen feet, could be vegetatively screened and the rest would be architectural. But I haven't actually looked at the renderings yet to see what that would look like, but they're hoping to come to Planning Commission next week. Assuming it's in a, in a decent state, they'll be there and we can probably have more to discuss next month. Uh, and the last thing is, we received comments from PennDOT with the Green Let Go grant, uh, scoping application. This would be for Orange. And um, West Second, uh, and that opens up on Saturday and closes by the end of the month, so we're putting that in. Any questions? Thank you.
Rob, looks like you're done typing, so.
Yes, um, so just a couple of things here. First, uh, from, from Andy of Public Works, um, obviously we have some cold weather and some snow here. Uh, team handled it well. Uh, Andy's ordered some more salt, um, just to replenish some of our supplies. But all that went uh, a- as normal. Uh, from Operations and Finance, um, our audit fieldwork will begin on Monday, February third. It'll last all week. Um, we're gonna file the same schedule as twenty twenty-four. So what that means is we'll have our DCED report um, filed by the end of March. And then the actual council report that you see uh, will be by the end of May. And that's uh, that's it besides what I've submitted. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Rob? All right. Believe that's it and Elijah, I do see you got rid of that one Eric who's on the agenda that I was always like, why is that on there? All right, moving on to the final agenda item is public comments. Does anyone have any comments, questions regarding any of the agenda items? That have not previously been discussed? All right, moving on to the final agenda item is public comments. Does anyone have any comments, questions regarding any of the agenda items that have not previously been discussed? Around, I think. Michael? Why are you smiling?
Well, I don't know if this officially qualifies as not being previously discussed, but um I messed up and I'm going to be in big trouble. So I can do it in my three minutes if Rob can help me. But I had a quick video to show you guys at the end of my presentation and I got so sidetracked by the great questions that I forgot to have Rob queue it up. So it's literally only ninety seconds long, but it is a highlight of we started um implementing helmet cameras at the fire station a couple of years ago. And because the cops were wearing like their body worn cameras, so we had to take it to a higher level. So we we put ours on the helmets. But it's been really cool. Like we have eight of them that are in service now. And some of the stuff that we're able to gather as a result of using those. And so this was just like a quick, like ninety second a ninety second like video of the entire, like all of this stuff is from twenty twenty-four. So hopefully Rob can get this.
Burning into your time there, Mike.
Yeah, hopefully he can get this to play.
Use it for training?
Yeah, so that was actually like the main reason why we got it and it's been phenomenal. Um, but as a side effect, we found that um from an investigation side, it's also very helpful. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Feel free to get up and move around so you.
We probably should have played it first.
Good thing Dwayne left your review.
It's so much trouble.
We'll tell us. We'll tell them we saw it.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a real suppression there, right? But was the one before training?
Uh, no.
That was real too?
Yep.
I'll do a sixty minute video next year. Or sixty seconds, I mean. Yeah, so I think, you know, again, just to highlight, that was all from twenty twenty-four. And I think one of the things that I really wanted to point out is the fact that I think it's easy to just kind of think that, you know, it's the local volunteer fire company. This is Little Old Lit It's and, you know, but this, what these guys, you know, these young kids and all the rest of the group over there, like what they're doing, like this is for real, you know, and and so I just, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it's not just Little Old Lit It's. I mean, these guys are volunteers, but they're out there doing a bang up tremendous job. So I apologize. It was already talked about, but I forgot, so.
We won't tell Dwayne.
Thanks, Mike.
Great effort for whoever put into that. I'm glad you did remember. Anybody else? Chris?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Chris Strayer is walking out.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, six months ago, there was a conversation about updating the AV in here and I couldn't help but be reminded that we're all still sitting here with one TV facing you guys. Probably two years ago, I sent an email to Shane, offered a TV seventy-five inch at that point, which was forwarded to Rob and then nothing was done with it. Can can we fix this? Can we get another TV right here angled out to the rest of the audience? It's not that hard to link this together.
Absolutely.
If you're going to ask the residents to come here, at least let us see what's going on.
I'll think and just say your name and everything. So everybody online.
Chris Strayer, Front Street Lit It's.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, guys. It was in the budget, but there were some financial, there was some concessions, correct? Because I know there were some AV discussions during budget time and I think that.
We downsized the the AV budget, but the TV was still in it. So we'll we'll make that happen, correct?
Yeah, it all got taken out of last year, then we have it in for this year. Um, but we do have the uh the switch and the HDMI cables. We're just, we didn't, we didn't buy the TV yet, uh, but we'll do that soon.
Okay. Thanks for the.
The shopping, Rob.
Thank you, Chris. And we will make sure that it is visible to the public. I asked Elijah to go tilt that one as much as he could, but it should be visible to you all. And thank you for your patience and reminders.
Anybody else? Anything on the agenda? I see nobody getting up, nobody hands. Last thing on the agenda, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, it's motion approved. Thank you all very.